Good morning, welcome to our June 10th, 2025 Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business will please stand and join me for the pledge to the flag.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our second item is agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Do I have a motion for the agenda?
Move the review.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
I'll move to recess for the economic development meeting.
Commissioner, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess for the economic development. All in favor, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We will call our Economic Development Authority Meeting for June 10th, 2025 to order. Agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda.
I'll move it.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minutes of May 6th, 2025.
Move the minutes.
Got a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right, thank you. Nancy?
Good morning.
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 Morning. Good to see you both. Couple items to deal with today, good going on. You can just introduce yourselves and start off. I got phase five of the partnership on my agenda, so.
Sure. My name is Nancy Bockelman and staff for the EDA. And then we have Jen Thienam and Director of Real Estate and Community Development for Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership.
Good morning.
And Jen is here today to put in a request for the Community Land Trust. They're working on putting in together an application for Minnesota Housing and are seeking support from the EDA. And so I'll turn it over to Jen to talk about their request.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. As discussed not too long ago, we're working on the phase five for the City of Mankato implementation of the Partnership Community Land Trust. We have been working on this for quite a few years. And so this is just the continuation of continuing to seek funding from the state and looking for local support to leverage a successful application of the state for phase five application. We're submitting for 10 homes in the City of Mankato proper and write downs that we've, or support that we've been able to leverage, not only Minnesota housing funding, we've received new markets tax credits, which is federal dollars that is secured, that comes through the Housing Partnership Network, City of Mankato funds, philanthropy funds from the Target Foundation, as well as Autobrumer Trust. And so now seeking some additional funds to help us to lower the cost of the homes for the participants. Our homeownership advisors work with City of Mankato residents to not only qualify them, but also do all the things that are necessary, whether that's credit report, I'm sorry, credit score fixing, implementation, there's home buyer education that they're mandated to go through. These homes would be at 80% area median income or less, which is in the low 90s for a household income. And the cost of construction is quite high, as you likely know. And so we're needing to layer a lot of leverage support to reduce the cost, so it's attainable for families in the community.
They were looking for the support of $250,000 for the 10 homes, or $25,000 for each home. And we were bringing to you the money that you have set aside in the Housing Trust Fund, and that is the SAHA funds, the statewide affordable housing aid dollars. And we just got word yesterday that your grant application to Minnesota Housing for additional monies to come into the grant was funded. So they matched the $150,000 that the EDA put into the project.
Okay.
So you have this $300,000 that would be available. At our last meeting, you did allocate the phase four funds of the $250,000. So we did have that. We were hoping we could use those new grant funds for that. And there's still $50,000 that would be available for that. Plus you have $400,267 in the statewide affordable housing aid that you have access to. So we would encourage you to consider $150,000 to go towards this request for the Community Land Trust.
Yeah, 125 from the city and 125 from us. So that's good. Any questions?
We'll approve.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to approve the Partnership Community Land Trust agreement?
Looks like a great program. Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, Jen, when you say there is layers of funding and trying to organize that and orchestrate all that and get the approval from each individual, that's got to be a lot of work. So thanks for doing all that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
No, it's all good.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And then I got Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee Membership.
And I know last month, too, you also had appointed four members to this board. And one of the members, Kristi Wilkie with the Mayo Foundation, was unable to continue that. So we were bringing before you Corey Merle with Pioneer Bank, who's had years of experience working in banking. He's also worked with Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, has a good understanding of affordable housing in our community. He works a lot with smaller landlords in our community, which is an asset for us as we try to engage with landlords. And then he is also on the board for Habitat for Humanity. So he really has a good handle in our community what affordable housing is. And so we'd make requests that you would appoint Corey Merle to the advisory board.
All right. I'll move that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the appointment. Is there any discussion?
Looks good.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Bridges Program Through Minnesota Housing Agreement.
And for the Bridges Program, as you remember, we did have this program back for many years until 2019, where we received a lot of mainstream vouchers. We received 112 mainstream vouchers. And so we were utilizing, and that is for elderly, non-elderly disabled individuals, which covered those that met the criteria for bridges. So we did not renew the Bridges Program because we were able to use these 120 vouchers. Now we have a waiting list for that. And so we did go back to the state of Minnesota to seek an award of additional vouchers. And we did work regionally because it is a partnership with the South Central Community Based Mental Health Initiative. And so they cover 10 counties in our central Minnesota here. And so we requested 25 vouchers and we awarded the 25. And the funding is $437,801. And it is for a two-year term. And we do receive administrative fees of $81 for each family per month. And so we are asking you today to sign the grant agreement and authorize the cooperative agreement with the South Central Community Based Mental Health Initiative. So they will provide the support services and we'll be coming in with providing that rental assistance.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy? Or the wishes of the board?
Move the second.
Got a motion and a second for the Minnesota Housing Agreement, another exciting program. And to get them all, that's awesome. So any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. That brings me to the end of my agenda.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion to adjourn the EDA meeting.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, our next item on the agenda is our County Ditch 56 hearing for proposed petition outlet under Minnesota Statute 103E-401. Are there any changes to the agenda today?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion for the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda that is printed. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the engineer's report and also take public comment on the proposed petition in impound waters in Blue Earth County Ditch 56 watershed. The order of the business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineers. And then we will open it up for public comments. I will ask Craig to give us, from our drainage staff, to review the jurisdictional documents at this time.
Okay. The hearing notice was mailed on May 27th, 2025. Notice was posted for the hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South Fifth, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press on May 20th, 27th, and June 3rd, 2025. As far as the memo here, this is County Ditch 56, sand sediment basin petition for impoundment. It's a 103E.227 hearing. Purpose: The County Ditch 56 watershed is approximately 9,400 acres in size and located in Garden City and Lincoln Townships. On May 11th, 2025, a petition to impound reroute and divert portions of County Ditch 56 open ditch was received on behalf of the petitioners from Blue Earth County Soil and Water Conservation District and Michael and Liz Sant. The proposal's petition affects portions of the property line in section five of Garden City Township. On April 8th, 2025, Charles J. Brandl of ISG was appointed as the engineer for these proceedings in order to produce and submit an engineer's review report. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are seeking approval of the draft financed order granting the petition to impound reroute divert portions of County Ditch 56 public drainage system waters, including approval pending signatures of all necessary drainage easements. That's it for jurisdiction documents.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions?
Remove the documents.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the documents?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the documents. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I will now ask ISG staff, ISG staff to come forward to present the engineer's report. Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning. Chuck Brandl with ISG. So I've got the legal requirements of this report. Jacob Mueller did help put this together. Was at the landowner meeting. He's getting work done back at the office. So I'm here to present this. So per the statute, we must meet findings that say this is a public or private benefit, not impair utility or drainage of the system. But really, why are we here? We've met on CD 56 over the years on many different repairs, improvements, and landowners, city officials, SWCD, county staff, county board, we've all been working together. How do we improve the sediment coming into Lake Crystal and through the city? And we applied for a grant through the Bowser Storage Program and got the grant. So the SWCD led the grant efforts with the rest of us helping out. And we've been awarded a grant for $600,000. Now, the legal parts of this is we want to make this storage basin part of the drainage system, so it can be maintained in perpetuity. And it actually helps the drainage system. So this is a real fun one to talk about, because a lot of work went into this and a lot of, all of us together. Just some brief history on CD 56. This system's been in front of this board many times, established in 1920. This ditch gets cleaned on average every eight years because of light soils, wind erosion, and other things, essentially sediment in the ditch. There was delta cleaning in Lake Crystal at the mouth of this system a couple of years ago. And really, all of this has led to how can we control some of the sediment? How can we reduce those cleanings? How could we keep sediment out of the city and out of the lake? So just a few things. Like Craig said, the system's 9,000 acres, mostly agricultural row crops, except for the city. Here's the watershed. So this red line is everything that is in CD 56. The blue line is the open ditch. It drains from south to north.
You're not coming up on our screen.
Oh, shoot.
I'm getting there, sorry.
All right. I didn't look, I'm just.
How quickly I forget.
We got the maps up here, but I don't know if everybody's got maps.
How's this? There we go. I don't need to back up, do I?
No.
All right. So here's the ditch system. The blue line's the open ditch. The city is on the north end, and the ditch drains into the lake. Our project location is in the yellow circle. So here's just some of those historical photos of sediment coming out of the ditch system. Here's a culvert crossing within the city that is routinely cleaned out. We have some erosion that happens on the ditch because of the light soils. This project should help all of these things, not solve all of them, but will help all of these things. So here's an aerial view of the project site. So this is looking north. This is County Ditch 56. We're squaring up a little piece of property here, about seven acres of land, about five acres of storage and wetland. And the ditch will be diverted into this area. This will be excavated out. And there'll be a large sediment trap, which I'll show you in detail here shortly. So here is the, kind of the, one of the design sheets. The blue area is the storage basin. The yellow area is a four-foot-deep sediment trap that'll be able to be cleaned out routinely, predict depending on weather, might be a two-to-five-year cycle. But again, that should reduce cleanings along the open ditch. It should reduce cleanings in the city itself. So in the long run, this should save, hopefully save maintenance on the ditch system. The green line is a buffer. So there'll be a buffer around the top of this basin that'll allow access, but also protect the side banks from erosion. And the basin's five and a half acres. The total easement is seven acres. It'll store 51 acre feet of water during flood events, and it'll capture just under 350 tons of sediment a year. So that's a lot of sediment that we can capture in this basin. There will be a weir constructed in the channel that will divert flow into the wetland, or into the storage basin, and then a culvert at the outlet that'll control the flows to slow it down enough to drop off the sediment and increase storage volume. There will, under large events, that weir will act as a bypass. It'll overtop and bypass the ditch. So that way, we don't cause additional flooding further downstream in the system. Just another clarification, the orange area, that's where we're putting all the material. So all this will be taken out and then spread out approximately one to three feet in depth over this area. Shouldn't have to leave, go on a road. Should all be able to be constructed within that same area. There is some retiling. Will be disturbing private tiling in this location. So it'll be a tile on the east side that'll connect in some tile that's currently there. A little bit more detailed look at the grading plan, which we went over with landowners. Lots of riprap right where we're dividing the water in. And then this green line is the culvert that's going to control the flow at the outlet. The reason we're putting the sediment basin on the east side is we'll be able to go along the buffers and then take that material in the future out into the fields. Work with the landowners to do that maybe during non-crop times of the year. Here's the seeding plan and erosion control plan. We've had some experience with some of these large basins that we do get some wind erosion. And so we're going to look at more of a permanent erosion control treatment on the southeast corner with turke reinforcement mat. It's a plastic mat that grass can grow through. And then the rest of the basin will be, have erodible erosion control mat, and then seeding the buffers in the bottom of the basin. There is a small tile diversion that we're proposing as part of this. It wasn't originally part of the grant, but we have reviewed the calculations and the project still achieves the goals that it was going to achieve. This tile is very, very shallow. There's land to the west that is very, very shallow. This project does not increase flood elevations in the ditch, but I think just for drainage purposes, long-term maintenance, because this tile's not in good shape, we should reroute it around the weir, just a slight reroute. So that would be a repair to branch one, moving that to the north side of the weir. This board knows about storage benefits, but it increases overall capacity, reduces peak flow rates. There will be permanent damages and temporary damages. Those were all factored into the grant. We have to topsoil strip the fill areas, put that material, and bring that topsoil back. We did do a hydraulic model of this, looking, and it was required of the grant to do that. And you have to show that you have reduction of flows. We updated that model with the final design, looking at the storage area and the culverts upstream and downstream. And we show that we are reducing the flood upstream and downstream, and we show that we are reducing the flood elevations in the ditch system by half a foot to a foot upstream and downstream by a tenth to three tenths. So it does have a positive benefit to the ditch system that we have more storage capacity during large flooding. And then it'll obviously capture sediment, which will reduce cleanings. From a peak flow standpoint, we are reducing peak flows downstream, which will help also with erosion and flood events. Really, your smaller events, your two-to-four-inch rains, big decrease in flows, the large events, because this is such a large drainage system, you have a little less effect on the system, so. But still, there is a positive effect. So project cost, we're estimating that the project's going to cost six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. The grant was for five hundred and ninety-six thousand and seventy-five dollars. That leaves about sixty-five, nine twenty-five left. The city of Lake Crystal and the Crystal Waters Group have committed six thousand dollars to this. This includes a ten percent contingency. There may be a small amount that we may need contribution either from the county or the ditch system for this. I'm anticipating that we should come in very close to budget. This project does require prevailing wages because of the grant funding when, if it were approved a bit, so. Based, in conclusion, the project is feasible, and I feel it is a benefit to the system. It will reduce flooding, capture sediment. We did have a landowner meeting last week, very good participation, lots of questions. Everybody seemed pretty positive about the project, so we are recommending that you approve the project. If you do, we could bid it almost immediately, couple of weeks to finalize some details on the plans, review those with the SWCD, and we potentially could have construction after harvest this year, more than likely most of it next year, one or the other. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Does anybody from the board have a question for Chuck at this point, any clarifying question?
My only clarifying comment would be, Chuck, you said six thousand, you meant sixty thousand, thirty thousand each.
Oh, yes, sorry, sixty thousand, correct.
There's a difference, yeah.
Yes, yep.
Somebody's calling.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chuck, for that report. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be respectful and civil. Please note that the meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you're, you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment at this time on the impoundment? Anyone wishing to comment on the impoundment water for County Ditch Fifty-Six at this time? Last time, for anyone wishing to comment on the County Ditch Fifty-Six project, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no public comment, I will close the portion of the public hearing, bring it back to the county board for action. Anybody from the board have any other questions or comments at this time?
Well, if you have some comments before that, though, I will move to accept the findings in order for the final report for the petition to impound water on CD Fifty-Six, including the branch one reroute, and all necessary easements are obtained.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. You have a second? Got a motion in a second? Discussion? Kevin?
I want to say a lot about this. I'll try not to say too much, but I mean, this is, this is something we've worked a long time on. I mean, you know, when we had upstairs at the lakes, that was three years, nine months, and three days ago, back in, in September of twenty twenty-one, as we looked at different things to do. Certainly, this has got to win three ways, I think. We talked about the sediment, will capture the sediment, be able to do that, will also alleviate that load in the Crystal Lake, which we've talked about before. You know, three hundred and forty-five tons, that's a forty percent reduction. Second is the storage, as it's going to aid in the flood prevention in Lake Crystal, the backup, as well as stability of the downstream water, and restore that, as already been mentioned, but also saving the costs, future system costs, and quite frankly, the needs for a public waters permit to clean as we've had in the past. So it didn't happen by itself. You know, certainly the Drainage Authority, Blue Earth County, City of Lake Crystal, Crystal Waters, the conservation groups, ISG, Bowser, both the Blue Earth County, SWCD, but things like this don't happen without landowner support and landowner buy-in, because that's what they're giving up. So, you know, want to certainly acknowledge Mike and Thomas Sant and others as landowners for working through this long project. We're not done yet, but I think we're going to have something here in Blue Earth County that is going to be showed off to the rest of the, the rest of the state as far as how water storage and sediment capture can work. So I would ask for everybody's support.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other comments? I think the only thing I would add to that is this even goes further back than your, and I remember your forcing, because you came into that meeting with some buckets and had a little presentation, and we actually built a lot of consensus, I think, at that meeting. We worked diligently before that, but just were never really able to get it put together and move forward. But that, I remember that meeting specifically because it just seemed like it was kind of a roughy, rough area there, trying to figure out who's going to pay for it, but after we figured out that, that this can be done, and then things started moving in the right direction, so. Thanks for your help on that, Kevin, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch Fifty-Six improvement hearing, so thank you everyone for your time. It looks like Craig has a whole list of other stuff for us here, so let's get to that. So now we'll move on to item number five on our agenda, drainage, and we'll start with, I got judicial ditch fifteen. Appoint viewers first, Craig?
Yes. Excuse me. This is the appointment of viewers for a redetermination benefits for judicial ditch fifteen. The Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch Fifteen watershed is approximately three thousand acres in size and located in Lincoln Township. The current benefits listing was created in nineteen ninety-seven as part of a petition improvement, and a redetermination is required to reflect present-day land values and usages. At today's meeting in the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint viewers to complete a redetermination benefits for judicial ditch fifteen.
All right. Yep, got a motion, do you have a second? Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the judicial ditch fifteen viewers. Second item I got is County Ditch Forty-Seven.
Yes.
Okay.
Three items on forty-seven.
Okay.
Okay. County Ditch Forty-Seven, petition for removal. A petition for removal was received by the Property Environmental Resources Drainage Staff on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, under 103 E point eight zero five. Petitioner Jay Ingles is seeking to remove properties from County Ditch Forty-Seven, a public drainage system, including removal of benefits on petition properties. The petition alleges that the petition acres are no longer benefited by the County Ditch Forty-Seven public drainage system. The petition states that there are no parts of County Ditch Forty-Seven provides an outlet to the petition area, and removing the petition area will in no way prejudice the remaining property owners or property remaining in County Ditch Forty-Seven public drainage system. Blue Earth County Drainage Attorney Cale Van Brugen from Rankinuna has reviewed the proposed petition documentation and found them to be adequate for the proceedings. Attorney Van Brugen also recommends that an engineer and a viewer be appointed to provide their respective review reports for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three E point eight zero five. At today's Drainage Authority meeting, we are asking the Drainage Authority to approve the draft findings in order, ordering the appointment of an engineer and viewer for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three E point eight zero five.
Do you have a motion?
Some don't.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Second item here on forty-seven is very similar. A petition for removal was received by the Property Environmental Resources Department's Drainage Staff on April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, under 103 E point eight zero five. The petitioners John Ingles and Donna Ingles are seeking the removal of properties from County Ditch Forty-Seven, a public drainage system, including removal of benefits on petition properties. Petition alleges that the petition acres are no longer benefited by the County Ditch Forty-Seven drainage system. The petition states that there are no part of County Ditch Forty-Seven provides an outlet to the petition area, and removing the petition area will in no way prejudice the remaining property owners or property remaining in the County Ditch Forty-Seven public drainage system. Blue Earth County Drainage Attorney Cale Van Brugen of Rankinuna has reviewed the proposed petition documentation and found them to be adequate for these proceedings. Attorney Van Brugen also recommends that the engineer and a viewer be appointed to provide their respective review reports for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three E point eight zero five. At today's Drainage Authority meeting, we are asking the Drainage Authority to approve the draft findings in order, ordering the appointment of a viewer and engineer and a viewer for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three E point eight zero five.
Thank you, Craig.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item for the day. A petition for removal was received by the Property and Environmental Resources Staff on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, under 103 E point eight zero five. The petitioners Frank Klinkner and Sandra Klinkner are seeking the removal of properties from County Ditch Forty-Seven, a public drainage system, including removal of benefits on petition properties. Petition alleges that the petition acres will, are no longer benefited by the County Ditch Forty-Seven public drainage system. The petition states there is no part of County Ditch Forty-Seven provides an outlet to the petition area, and removing the petition area will in no way prejudice the remaining property owners or property remaining in the County Ditch Forty-Seven public drainage system. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, Cale R. Van Brugen from Rankinuna has reviewed the proposed petition documentation and found it to be adequate for the proceedings. Attorney Van Brugen also recommends that an engineer and a viewer be appointed to provide their respective review reports for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three E point eight zero five. At today's Drainage Authority meeting, we are asking the Drainage Authority to approve the draft findings in order, ordering the appointment of an engineer and a viewer for the proposed petition for removal under Minnesota Statute one oh three point eight zero five.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll move it.
Got a motion? Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move down to item number six, Property Environmental Resources. Michael? Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, guys.
Chuck. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, Michael. Mr. Chair Commissioners, for the record, Michael Stolberger, Director of Property and Environmental Resources. I have three items for you today from the department. The first one is a request to purchase and add on to our enterprise assessment and tax software. That is our Tyler system, it's our Kama system, it's how we generate our tax bills. As you remember, we converted to that system in twenty twenty-four. As we worked through that conversion, one area that was lacking was good information on commercial and industrial properties, the components that go into building those properties that are special uses in many instances. The software now has an option to add on through Marshall and Swift, which is a valuation company that's well-known across the country, to bring in their commercial and industrial property information. So we are looking to add this on to our contract. Our intentions are to add this through M triple C. We should be able to buy it through the consortium and get some price savings on that as well as we would be able to share some of those costs with other counties that are also members and users of the system. So as you can see, there's a one-time conversion fee of eighteen thousand six hundred dollars, and then that annualized cost would be three thousand dollars. That's to update the records, to get the latest and greatest on the building component pricing. Lots of value for us in this addition. It helps us value those properties, but what it'll really do is help us defend our values in tax court and otherwise, preventing some appraisal work that would need to be done or be hired through outside consulting firms. So looking for an opportunity here for the board to support that decision and allow us to acquire the Tyler Marshall and Swift valuation mod, model.
All right.
I'll have approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the Marshall and Swift valuation model? Any questions or comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right then, Mr. Chair, if you're okay, I'll move on to the next two items that go hand in hand.
Yeah.
These are purchases at the Pondrosa landfill. These are purchases that were included in our capital budget, and they are part of our plan to keep our equipment up to date and current out there, always trying to replace them as their extended warranties or their maintenance plans, and for multiple reasons, one being it's really expensive to repair this equipment, so that adds on a pretty large cost when we have components of them go down. But it also allows us to better stage the purchases so that we aren't hit with so many capital purchases in each and every year. So that's exactly what we're doing with these two items. The first item is the CAT nine sixty-three crawler loader. I am talking outside of school, I don't know this equipment as well as our supervisor, but he tells me that this piece of equipment is important for us to actually move earth and materials and other materials around the landfill. The current version is a twenty nineteen model, warranty expires on Caterpillar equipment after six years, and so that puts us to do here at the end of this year, with the lead time getting this equipment, this will be purchased in very early twenty twenty-six. We are proposing to step up in size, to have a larger bucket on there to allow us to move materials a little bit more efficiently, and the purchase price, as you can see, inclusive of the preventative maintenance plan, is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is under what was budgeted for that for the twenty twenty-six capital budget plan for the landfill. So we would like to entertain that one separately, offer request to authorize the purchase of that piece of equipment, the CAT nine sixty-three crawler loader.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion in a second to buy new piece of equipment? Any discussion?
Is that, um, there, it's available?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, there is still a lead time on them. We're looking at like six months to eight months, depending on the type of equipment, and so that puts us right in line with when that warranty will expire, and then we'll just have to hope that that little bridge there, we don't have any major, major repair issues with the piece of equipment. So lead times have gotten better, but it's still out there, and we just need to plan around that.
Thank you.
And what are we doing with the old one?
Those are, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, those are traded in, so that is a net price after trade-in.
Yeah.
These are very expensive pieces of equipment. It's crazy to look at the sticker price on, on some of these items.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chair, then the third item here, the last item for us today, is authorization to purchase a replacement for our eight fifty crawler dozer. Again, we're looking at stepping this up in size. This would be a John Deere nine fifty P. Same sort of cycle here where we run through the preventative maintenance warranty period, and then we look for replacements so that we always have equipment that is under warranty. Trade-in value included in that, the preventative maintenance plan included in that for a net cost of six forty-two, six fifty. Again, included in the Pondrosa's capital budget for twenty twenty-six, which is when we would receive that equipment after the order is placed and the lead time is met. So this piece of equipment is really important to us because it helps us move the waste around the landfill's working phase, so it is a good piece of equipment that we want to make sure that we keep, keep as operatable as possible, as much as possible.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion in a second to buy another piece of equipment for the landfill? The only comment I would have, or kind of a question, I would imagine if that piece of equipment does go down, it is problematic, because you have to fill that cover every night, right?
Correct.
So you have to get highway out there or someone else out there to...
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair, actually, what we do is amongst our large or heavy equipment out there, we do have redundancies built in, so like the, the loader that we just talked about, can fill us in there if we need to have that be a backup for the compactor. So we try not to use them in those alternative modes, just because they're not efficient. That's why we keep them under the warranty so we can get them repaired as quickly as possible, but they each kind of are able to fill a secondary role if we do have a piece of equipment go down.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael, good seeing you.
Thanks, Michael.
Good day. All right, we will move down to item number seven, Public Works. We've got Nick here today helping us out, Associate Engineer from the Highway Department. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's our privilege, you get to come and you can see us.
Again, I'm Nick Ingles, Public Works Department, Associate Engineer. I have two items on my list to go over today. The first one is consider a resolution for the County State Aid Highway Municipal Construction Funds Advance. We have budgeted to utilize past, current, and future allocations of our County State Aid Highway Municipal Construction Funds for the construction of County State Aid Highway fifteen and twenty-eight in the city of Saint Clair, and this construction will begin this summer. This project budget includes advance of our twenty twenty-six CASA municipal construction allocation towards this project. The enclosed resolution requests an advance of nearly all of the anticipated funds for the municipal construction funds to be used for this project. The practice of advancing these funds is a common for a lot of counties due to the large price of urban construction projects and the relatively small amount of annual allocations in this fund. I request that you approve the enclosed resolution.
All right, thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick?
I'll move it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? This is exciting to get that project going this year, so, thank you. Okay, no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The second item is to consider a resolution supporting the planning document development by MAPO. The request approval of the enclosed resolution requesting MAPO to conduct a corridor study of County State Aid Highway sixteen, Stoltzman Road, from one thousand feet south of Pleasant Street to Riverfront Drive, including an updated ice report at Pleasant Street. This is in advance of our twenty twenty-seven construction of Stoltzman Road, and this study will be done in twenty twenty-six. And I request that you approve the enclosed resolution.
All right, thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick?
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor...
It's gonna be a little fun, I think.
Busy corridor.
That is gonna be, yeah, that was gonna get some discussion, so it'll be good to have the study done.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Nick, good seeing you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for all your work, appreciate it. All right, we'll go on to item number eight, opioid settlement expenditure. Josh, good morning, Josh.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair Commissioners, today we have one item for board approval is for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. Our group had met again and reviewed a request from the South Central Community Base Initiative, an amount of ten thousand dollars. And what this funding is doing is through the SCCBI, they're partnering with all the counties within that joint powers to hire a project manager to work to plan for the establishment of a regional children's crisis center. So it's in the early stages, but using this money for planning, if there's any money left over, they would use this to continue with implementation plans. And under the, our opioid settlement, this falls under G eight and G twelve for approved uses of settlement funds. So, I respectfully request the board to approve the amount of ten thousand dollars for the project.
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Josh. County Attorney update, Megan, give anything to the...
She just got a call.
She got a call, she's...
Well, as always, the County Attorney gives us an update once a month, it's in our packet, and I'm sure he would be willing to answer any questions if we have them, but we'll just note that it's in there.
There she is.
Oh, there's Megan, did you have anything to add for the report? No, that's fine.
I do not, if you have any questions, I can certainly take them back and we'll get them answered.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Megan at this time? We appreciate the report, Pat gives us a lot, it's a good report. With that, we will move on to item number ten, Administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May twenty-seventh.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move it, second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab fifteen in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have one action item for the board's consideration today. I've asked Director Alvaak to join the meeting and give you a little more information on the salary adjustment procedures.
Hi Laura, come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chair Commissioners, I'm Laura Alvaak, Human Resources Director. I'm here today presenting, requesting approval to the updates to our salary adjustment procedures. The revisions are needed to align with some Minnesota statute that was recently revised, which prohibits using pay history to determine compensation for positions through a competitive process. So, some of the key changes would include that we no longer consider current or past pay when setting salaries. Clarifies salary factors, compensation decisions will be based on qualifications, experience, performance, and other lawful job-related criteria. Also defines internal actions such as procedures for promotions, reclassifications, demotions, and temporary assignments. And then also talks about annual step progression, which remains in place, and then allows elected department directors, they can, may play, may set step placement for key positions within authorized salary ranges. So, I recommend the approval of the procedures, which would be effective June fifteenth, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura, questions? Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, discussion? We talked about this a little bit at Department Head Meeting, so we're all aware of it. I think, my opinion personally, is I think it will give us a little more leeway, but it will muddy the waters to say, I mean, the system we had before was very systematic, and this will just give a little more leeway, which is always problematic or not. In my opinion, I think it'll help us, to be honest with you, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, then, under informational items, we have a lateral transfer of a social worker to a probation officer in the Community Corrections Department. Then we did receive a resignation of a social worker in our Child and Adult Protection Assessment area. And lastly, we've initiated recruitment to refill a probation officer, one position that we had been holding open for a period of time.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions for Bob?
Item number sixteen then in your packet is an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license by the Blue Earth County Fair Association for the fair in July, and so we're recommending approval of this application.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Any discussions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number seventeen in your packet then is an application for an exempt gambling permit by Ducks Unlimited Lost Marsh Chapter one oh five. They are holding an event at the Indian Island Winery in August, and so we're recommending approval.
I'll move it. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the gambling permit, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number eighteen in your packet then is a financial status report for May thirty-first. You'll see that our total revenues now after the first half taxes have been received sit at sixty point seven million against expenses of sixty-one point eight. Again, not terribly surprising given the amount of expenditure related to our Public Works building project. So, we're sitting in better shape probably than maybe I would have expected given the amount of outlay for that project. Our state and federal revenues at the top of the page still lag behind last year and a little bit behind our budget, hoping that'll catch up here in June. Our, you'll see our local tax levy, first half collections have been received. We did receive a little more than half, so we are seeing a continuing trend of some prepayments there. Transportation sales tax is a little bit behind our budget target at this point in the year, and again, I mentioned that at the last report, that that's an area that we're continuing to monitor. On the upside, our interest on investments is up from last year and is exceeding our budgeted target, so that's the bright spot on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, our public aid assistance is just slightly over budget, although down a little bit from last year at this time. Salaries continue to put pressure on our overall budget. The contracts and fees line is down a little bit from last year and a little bit below our budget target at this point in the year. Again, that's a little bit cyclical with our construction projects, and we'll see that line grow over the next few months. The building and equipment purchase line, you'll see at sixteen point eight million dollars. That's again reflective of the Public Works building and a little bit above our target for this time of year, but again, we've had some concentration of those expenditures as the project has really been proceeding well. On the enterprise fund, towards the bottom of the page, this is our Pondrosa landfill. You'll see revenues at just under two point three million with expenses just under one point five million. Obviously, some of the activity today for purchase of large capital equipment can impact that, although I don't expect those two particular items to show up until the twenty twenty-six budget, but we still will kind of monitor this budget. We should finish out this year in good shape. The second page then has our cash and investment balances. You'll see that towards the top of the page, our total available funds sit at eighty-seven point two million. Our six-month operating needs are at seventy-four point three million. Again, with the first half taxes being collected, we're a little above that target at this point in time, but with the June expenditures, we should see it come back down. The total county funds then sit at one hundred and thirty-eight point nine million, which is down from the previous year. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the financial status report.
Any questions? Thank you for that report, Bob. That brings me to the end of my agenda. If there's nothing else for the, this meeting, we'll move on to committee reports. Commissioners' reports, Patty, I'll start with you today.
All righty, after our last meeting, on May twenty-eighth, I had the community ed meeting and the Spirit of Youth event. On the twenty-ninth, I had a NACO ledge call. June fourth, Department Heads, and June seventh, I went to the Rapidan Museum Open House.
Oh, did you make it?
I did. And that's it. And my report.
Vance.
Let's see, on June second, I did, I had an MRCI Board Finance Committee, and then that was followed by a MRCI Board Meeting. On the third, I had a NACO Membership Committee Meeting on Zoom. Had the Department Head Meeting on the fourth, and on the fifth, I had a TZD Steering Committee Meeting on Zoom, and that was it with me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mark.
I had on June fourth, again, like others, the Department Heads Meeting, and June fifth, had a MAPO Board Meeting in the evening. And then on June sixth, we did have ASA Virtual Meeting on some change orders for the rink, ice rink there. And then June sixth, had a Semerex Meeting in Otana, that's recycling items. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, Kevin.
Since the May twenty-seventh Board Meeting, on the twenty-ninth, I participated in the ISG Drainage Event. On the thirtieth, we had Gaburba Policy Committee. June second, we had PACE Committee, as well as Renewable Minnesota Energy Board Meetings in Slaton. On the fourth, I was at Department Heads, as well as the CD fifty-six Land Owner Meeting. The fifth, we had the SWCD Board Meeting. I two on the seventh was at the Rapidan Open House. And then on the ninth, we had a NACO Ag Leadership Call and Minnesota River One Watershed One Plan Meeting in St. Peter. That concludes my report.
Commissioner, I'm glad we had some representation at the Historical Society Event that Paula invited us to, but I was at graduations and family things and busy weekend. So, thank you guys for going to that. As was mentioned, Department Head was mentioned, I did have planning and zoning. We'll see a couple items at the end of this month, nothing alarming, everything went really well at the meeting. Had my SECB Legislative Meeting. Of course, they're just kind of waiting for the legislature to wrap up, but we really didn't get a whole lot passed that we needed done. So kind of same business as usual, SWCD was mentioned. Highway fourteen partnership, we talked with the City of Eagle Lake and Mendot and Bolton and Make about the study they did about the interchanges in Eagle Lake. We are trying to dial in on what we will support and get the unified support from the city and from the county. The city's still kind of leaning towards two intersections, they would like to see a high T at Casey's and then a full interchange on the east end of the town, but I just think that's just a big ask in this environment and to try to get two intersections in a small community at this point. So we're strategically trying to figure out what we should ask for, and I tried to explain to the people in the meeting that it's a lot of work for the staff at the county just to try to build those roads, not including the funding portions, we both have, on both those intersections, we have a leg that comes into that. So, very problematic from the standpoint of financing, but also from the, you know, just the staff issues, trying to lobby for money and get that stuff done, so. But we had a good conversation, things are working the right direction, and then I also had several ditch issues that I had to deal with and some gravel road issues, but they were township roads, but we still managed to get drug into them, don't we, Kevin? But that is my report. I would entertain a motion to recess to go to Jake Stadium Pizza later.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second to recess, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we are recessed. All right.